I think so. What time is it?
Sixty-eight.
Sixty-eight.
You know.
Okay, I think we've got everybody we're gonna have for tonight. If not, they could please come on in. But good evening. We're gonna call the order. The June Village of Cornwall on Hudson Planning Board Session, the seventeenth of June, at six fifty-eight P M on twenty twenty-five. Great, tonight we have three orders of business. One old business is to take a look at our meeting minutes, and then we're gonna go right into the public hearing for Storm King School on Dyre Hall. After that, we'll do the McGregor E. Woods subdivision. Any questions from anybody? Any questions from the board? Okay? If not, has the board had an opportunity? Oh, one other thing, two things really. Tonight, we have a quorum, but we're missing Mr. Chaudry and Ms. Doyle. And I am neighbors up front, I'm gonna tell you, I am neighbors of the Storm King School, but I don't see any need for myself not to be part of this process. So I'm gonna remain on the board as the chair while we're going through this. Okay, with that, do I hear a motion to approve the minutes?
Minutes approved, yes.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Good. Okay, the public hearing. This is how I'd like to do the public hearing tonight. First, we'll open it up as a board, and then after we open it up, I'm gonna ask Mr. Fuller, John Fuller, to come up and give the public an overview of what Storm King School would like to do. Then after that, we'll take public input. When the public input's complete, I'll ask the board if they have any questions. Okay? Then we'll go to our consultants and the code enforcement officer, and then we'll circle back to Mr. McKay, and we'll talk about, do we wanna keep the board or the public hearing open, or we wanna close it, or how do we wanna do that? We'll make a decision on that, and then I think we'll pretty much give some guidance and we'll move on. Anybody have any questions on that? Okay? Mr. Fuller?
Yep.
Please give us an overview.
All right, good evening. I'm not sure if this is working, but I'll speak loudly. Mr. Chairman and the board and to the public, my name is John Fuller. I'm a professional engineer that's representing the application before the public this evening for a public hearing. With me tonight also representing the school is the headmaster, Ms. Lisa Shambow, and also Jamie Smith, the facilities manager at the campus. What we have proposed, I've represented them both from a site plan as well as in architectural purposes, and behind me mounted on boards are our current site plan for the proposed development, as well as some renderings of the proposed classroom addition that we are proposing to Dyre Hall, which is one of the existing facilities or existing classroom facilities at the campus. We're looking to, among many things, renovate the existing Dyre Hall, but also add on to it approximately seventy-five hundred square feet of additional classroom space and associated site work that's been displayed both in our site plan as well as our renderings, and also a parking area to the rear of the facility to accommodate needs at the campus. We've gone through a pretty extensive site plan review process to date, certainly prepared to answer any questions and comments this evening. I'm gonna, in a moment, I'll turn the time over to Lisa to just share some introduction about the school. For the record, we've identified that the need for this expansion is certainly to create more modernized classroom settings for the students at the school. It's currently not intended necessarily to increase student occupancy from its current levels, but certainly to modernize the campus to meet the current needs of today's student population. Part of the renovation will involve upgrading to what we call STEM facilities or STEM labs in just more spacious classroom settings in order to accommodate, you know, a current student population. That's the extent of what we're doing, and I think it's spelled out pretty clearly. Dyre Hall sits somewhat central in the middle of the campus. As is customary with a lot of site developments, there are a lot of environmental regulations that we have to address, among many things, things like stormwater controls that's being designed as part of the site plan process to make sure that we meet current regulations that are necessary by various agencies. But with that introduction, and I'll happy to answer anything that the public has regarding questions about the project, but I'll turn the time over to Lisa to just give another brief introduction about the school.
Okay, thank you. Please.
Thank you, John. Good evening. We are so pleased and excited to present this project tonight. Storm King School has been, as you know, a part of the community since eighteen sixty-seven. Currently, our school enrolls one hundred and seventy-five students. About thirty percent of those are day students who come from our local communities, and about seventy percent are students who board on campus, and they come from a number of different states and from twenty different countries. Our kids are in the eighth to twelfth grades, and they are terrific kids. They're college-bound, they're committed to community service. I just collected this information for our recent commencement address, and our kids have done over five thousand hours of service this year alone, and much of that in the local community, some of it internationally and in other areas as well. We have a great facilities crew. We work really hard to keep our campus updated, but we really haven't had a substantial update to our teaching and learning spaces on campus for many years. So this is beginning to have a potential impact on our enrollment as students come through to see our campus and other peer schools, and they see our academic spaces. We're working hard to keep our campus beautiful, but modernizing and updating our learning spaces is really essential to show the teaching and learning and just to create the space for our faculty and students for the future, future learning to come. So again, we're very excited for this project, happy to answer your questions and hear your feedback. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Okay, before we start the public part of this, just a couple of guidelines. One is if you have a comment or question, please come up to the podium, state your name and your address, and I would just ask everyone else to be courteous of the person that's up there. We only wanna hear from one person at a time. So with that, who would like to make the first statement or question?
Mr. Chairman, I don't know, does the applicant intend to kind of go through explanation of their project for the benefit of the public, and then, once the public has some more information, you can ask the public if they have any questions?
How much more do you want?
Well, I...
What else do you think you'd...
Well, just an explanation of how many buildings are being constructed. Just, I don't mean to interject myself into the meeting, but it's just so that the public has enough information to ask some questions.
Thank you. Good.
And agree, and I've spoken general terms, but I'll be a little bit more specific. I don't think the mics work in any way. But, you know, Dyre Hall is an existing building that is approximately three thousand square feet. It's right in the center of campus, which I've identified here. We're calling it an addition, but essentially, it's an attached, separate building that we're proposing to add on to it. This is this rear building here that we've identified. That's just slightly dimension-wise, seventy-two by one oh four, but it's about seventy-five hundred square feet. So it's a significant increase in classroom space over what's currently there. So you're, we're taking what's essentially a three thousand square foot facility, and we're gonna more than double it, you know, in fact, triple it with a seventy-five hundred square foot. And a lot of that is, again, being driven by just creating larger classroom spaces versus a lot of the current classrooms that are in Dyre Hall, but also in other locations on the campus, just because, you know, the modern atmosphere for teaching and education just needs more room and, you know, versus what was built in a prior time. And so that's really what the focus of Dyre Hall really is. And the entire development, you know, we speak in terms as engineers, you know, it's about a little over a one-acre development, so from a, you know, from a constructability standpoint, it's a fairly small site plan relatively speaking, but it's a little over one acre. What's important is we're also adding a parking area. There is an existing parking area behind Dyre Hall, but it's insignificant, you know, it's insufficient for what the current need is of the campus. The idea was to create more parking areas, which would help to alleviate stress on the campus when they have larger, what I'll call, events, you know, when, whether that be sporting events or certainly commencement or other reunion weekends or things. And so we're proposing that. Like I said, there's actually a, I'll call it a stormwater pond, but nowadays, we use terminology like bioretention, which is, it's designed to trap and treat water before we release it. And in today's regulations, which I spoke about a moment ago, you know, we're required to adhere to a lot of environmental regulations that's been passed down from the state, specifically the New York State D E C, as far as how we control water quality and water quantity when you create or propose construction activities. So that's been designed as part of the site, you know, and I think, you know, that's, in generality, that's the scope of the project. These renderings were created in order to give a visual representation of what the building is. I should note that it's a one-story, Dyre Hall's currently a one-story building, and the proposed expansion is a one-story building. So height-wise, we're not creating any significant, you know, height issues. From ground to peak elevation, we're well less than thirty feet, which is kind of a measure that we often do with buildings, but it's a one-story building. It will not have a significant change in the current grading or atmosphere of the site. We're trying to blend it into the current, what I'll call, topography of the land, so that the building sits well into that. So I think that's the general scope, and if there's any specific questions about the nature of the building or the site, you know, we're certainly happy to answer that.
Could you answer two questions real quick?
Yes.
That's the landscaping tree plan, 'cause there will be, have to have some trees that are taken down for the public. And then the other part is, is you talked about your stormwater retention, the bioretention pond, but the ultimate goal is, I assume, is zero impact to the neighbors on runoff, correct?
Yeah, absolutely. So I'll touch on that first. So our stormwater regulations require us not only to treat water that we generate, stormwater increases that we generate, we're required to treat it from what we call a water quality standpoint, so that we aren't polluting downstream watersheds or water bodies. So if you can imagine, you know, if you create pavement surfaces that potentially could have different hydrocarbons or stuff leaching off of vehicles, that could pollute our streams. Well, we're required to actually treat water or any increases in impervious surfaces like blight pavement, we're required to treat that before we release it. And so we do that in different types of settings. In this case, we're working around a concept called bioretention, which is designed to do that. And in that, we'll have a lot of planting or vegetation that absorbs what I'll call the, you know, those chemicals or hydrocarbons or, you know, other pollutants, we call them, in that. So that's what the bioretention is designed for. The other thing is we're required by regulation to not increase runoff, meaning we create more water than what was originally there. So our, we have to be net zero and/or less than, so that our pre-construction runoff, our post-construction, I should say, our post-construction runoff has to be less than our pre-construction runoff. So whatever runs off the property currently today, after this project, whatever storm, additional stormwater we generate by creating more impervious surfaces, that runoff has to be less than what it is today. And that's, that's how water quantity. And those are state regulations.
Okay.
And did I answer both your questions?
The trees?
Yeah. Oh, the trees, yeah. So as part of the project, we are, there are, this is within my documents, I didn't mount it on the board, so I apologize, but within our documents, our site plan documents, we are proposing to remove about thirteen mature trees in the area of the development. And in turn, we will, we have a pretty extensive landscaping plan to propose additional plantings to replace those trees in almost a ratio of two to one. So there'll be a lot more trees on the campus that obviously will grow to maturity over time.
Okay, thank you very much.
The mic works, it's just for live streaming.
I gotcha, I'm sorry.
Not making it loud.
Okay, thank you. Questions? Who would like to ask a question or has a comment from the public? Could be in support of, or does anybody have anything?
Why are you here?
In support of, right?
Hi.
Hi.
Say your name.
My name is Tim Gillett, I'm the dean of faculty at the Storm King School. I live at the school, so address is three fourteen Mountain Road. From an academic standpoint, the need for this new building is clear for us. The project represents, you know, an essential step forward to support a dynamic interdisciplinary learning environment, kind of a, you know, kind of a space that, you know, prepares our students for the world beyond the mountain. So I'm thrilled. It's not just about the square footage, it's about creating an environment that reflects the energy, creativity, and the ambition of our students and teachers. So I'm grateful to be part of a community that sees the value and investing in that future. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Tim. Anyone else? Sure.
Our non-village residents will have to comment?
Sure.
Okay.
Where are you from?
I'm from the town of Cornwall. I'm in the town.
Right, and your name?
My name is Ted Warren, Hasbrook Avenue, Cornwall. I didn't even come here tonight for this public hearing, but I'm an alumnus of Storm King School, and I attended classes in Dyre Hall when it was really small, and I'm just excited, I'm really excited to see this project. I think it's great. I think Storm King School is a wonderful benefit to our community, so I just wanted to go on record as saying I'm in support.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay? Yes?
Hello. I also don't live in the Village of Cornwall, I live in Newburgh, but I have grown up in Orange County my whole life. My name is Jennifer Burke, and I love working at Storm King. My address is Seven Penny Lane, Newburgh, in case that's needed. I've never done this before, please forgive me. The school has been growing in its capacity, not just in what we're trying to build for our students, but in what the students are doing. Everything that the students have done has impressed me in the whole year that I have worked there. I know having a bigger space with more amenities for them to really stretch their wings and fly will be a great boon to the school and for all the students that we serve, so I am firmly in support.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any thoughts?
Yeah.
Neil?
Bill? I'm Neil Noweski, I'm a trustee at Storm King School, so I'm obviously biased. I'm also a resident of Cornwall. And from a planning perspective, I think there is one thing that has not been addressed, and that normal concern, and Bill, we have experience with such things, is concerns about traffic flow as it relates to the expansion. And you should be aware that since there are no net increases really in students, that there is absolutely zero increase and danger of that wonderful turnoff from nine W onto Mountain Road, that there will be no increase in the traffic. And from a point of view of planning, which I'm sure you're concerned about, zero increase. So that's very critical. I absolutely fully support the project being on the board of trustees, and my student, my son just graduated the school, so I'd be lying to you to say I didn't love the idea. It's a wonderful prospect, and the classrooms are too small right now, they'll be much better. I think you're doubling the size, the number of classrooms, is something that you should be well aware of. It's a real, it's a credit to the community, a three, think about it, from a point of view of planning, a three million dollar project plus landscaping with no net increase in traffic. I mean, it doesn't get much better than that from a point of view of planning, so, there you go.
Thanks, Neil. Okay, anybody else? If not, I'm gonna ask if the board, board members have any. Gary?
No, not any questions. No, just to see this group smiling, I don't, I don't see a frown in the room. It's wonderful, and you have my individual support anyway.
Okay, thank you. I guess a couple of things I have is strictly, as you know, that there are still some things on the list that the village engineers asked for.
Yes.
And so we'll need to take a look at those before we go final on any resolution, et cetera. And then I think that's really my biggest point, and that will, that will kind of, that's where we have to decide on open or keeping closed the public hearing, so we'll talk about that at the end. Mr. Carmona, do you have any questions, comments, et cetera?
I'm one. I don't think that the board may want to report any comments on the Department of Planning, Orange County Department of Planning.
Yes.
They said that the project will not create any negative impact to the area, however, they have some advisory comments that I think were worthwhile discussing at the meetings, or that the applicant can address accordingly. Also, you may want to go through page eight, to page eight and nine of the Department of Planning application, there's some items there that you should consider as well to ensure that the project...
Okay.
Thank you.
Referringing the G M L two thirty-nine, and we could just go right down some of that, and...
I think it's this one.
Yeah, right here. Just talk about this. The G M L, the General Municipal Law, two thirty-nine. And you saw the guidance, and so stormwater management...
Yeah, and we've spoken to that, and so I prepared a SWIP and submitted it to Jason, obviously he'll review that, but that's, that's a typical comment from the county.
Sure. The environmental constraints. Mr. McKay, do you have any, you give some guidance on that or thoughts on that, on the environmental constraints comment, any thoughts on that?
On this particular, yeah, on this particular paragraph, the comment is that the project area is known to contain habitat for endangered or threatened species. Northern long-eared bat, golden eagle, and timber rattlesnake. Those are common throughout the county, particularly in many of the applications that we review. And generally, an applicant will suggest mitigation measures, certain cutting of trees, limiting cutting of trees to a certain time. For instance, with respect to the northern long-eared bat, I'm no environmentalist per se, so the eagle and rattlesnake protections, I need that for the applicant to...
Yeah, so I mean, I'm happy to have, you know, we work with environmental specialists, I'll call it, you know, and have them walk the site, he can generate a letter. Jason knows this is very common. I mean, the, when you prepare the short-form E A F using the D E C's environmental mapper, you know, you're going, if you're within proximity, generally, it could be several hundred feet, or it could be a couple miles of a particular species, you know, you'll get what's called a hit or an overlay. And essentially, the course of action is to review it, to see if the scope of the project really has any impact as it relates to those species. You know, certainly, this is a unique case, because we're right in the center of an existing school campus, and the footprint of what we're doing is currently occupied by the school. But, you know, if you were going to do significant tree clearing or alteration of a site, obviously, there could be impacts to certain species. Normally, with the bat, you know, there, and there are certain times of the year that you cut trees. And then, as Mr. McKay indicated, you know, that's pretty standard around the county. You know, we don't cut trees between the months of April and late in October, you know, but then we cut from October to March, you know, that's, that protects the bat habitat. And I, you know, the thing with the eagle is nesting, you know, again, we can have a specialist just walk the site, but I'm certain that as it relates to what we're doing for this project, that there's no nesting of the bald eagle at this, at this property. So, you know, those are common things, and so I'm happy to arrange to have, you know, have that done.
Sure.
Yeah.
The lighting, you've seen the guidance on the lighting?
Yeah, I mean, that's, again, that's a very routine comment in today's reviews, especially by the county, to make sure that projects are what we call dark sky compliant, you know, and that a lot of, the lighting we proposed is shielded, and it's directed down and not out, so that it has, you know, other impacts to the neighboring area, so.
Okay. The visual impact assessment, they're recommending a view from the river. I mean, I'm impressed with what you've shown.
Yeah.
It's gonna be an improvement, but I, your thoughts?
Well, I mean, again, and just as you pointed out, we've done numerous renderings of what this project will look like, and again, it's in the center of campus. I recognize that that's, you know, and again, that's a pretty common, especially when you're in historical areas, to do that. I'm not sure if the board really needs anything further beyond the renderings we're proposing. Again, it's, this is a one-story building, it's not gonna exceed more than thirty feet in height, it'll blend into the existing landscape of the campus. I don't think it would have any impact in, from a historical perspective.
Okay, and then landscaping, you...
Yeah, and landscaping, again, we've done that, we'll review that again before we finalize documents.
Okay. Mr. McKay, any additional questions, or is there something we should have in writing that them addressing this? Their thoughts on the county's comments, or...
Well, I guess, I, Mr. Fuller's indicated that they'll, I guess, supply a letter, someone will walk the site for some of the specific environmental issues. The question for the board is, the county has recommended, they're not binding recommendations, so were there recommendations, suggestions, you know, that impact assessment, the applicant's saying they don't think it's necessary due to the fact that they've provided some other visual renderings, but that's for the board to decide. The other items, the landscaping, the dark sky compliance, presumably, if they're not already on the plan, they will be added to the plan?
I look at it as, if you could come back, the next time you come back, if you have to address these bullets here, and how you wanna, either, we could have a discussion on it's not necessary, or...
Yeah, we'll identify...
That's all.
With Jason's remaining comments, and I'll let him speak to that, we'll address these along with any of his remaining comments, so that it, that the board feels that everything is complete and that we've addressed all that. I mean, again, I think the visual impact, there are times when those are appropriate, but again, I think the nature of what we're doing here and how it's just going to blend into the existing campus, I don't, there are times when you do visual impacts, like if you're gonna put up, you know, a fifty or seventy-five foot tower, you know, you'll, obviously, you could impact the view shed significantly, but this is just gonna blend in very well with what we have.
Okay. I'm gonna ask the board members. Gary, any comment on that?
No. I think the suggestions you made and...
Coming back with, tying back into Jason's comments.
It's fine.
That'd be great.
Very important to have that.
I'd like to have that documented.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Jason, any, did your comments?
We prepared a comment memo, and we have distributed to John. There's a number of things that need to be addressed on there, but they're technical items in nature generally, of the danger of stormwater, some comments regarding elevation setting of building, making sure it's all tied together, drainage of the parking lot, et cetera, but nothing out of the norm, nothing that I'm sure will be difficult for John to make.
Okay. Mr. Mc...
Mr. Carmona asked the board to look at, what, Manny, what were you referencing?
Page number eight, I have five and six, I have five, just to make sure I have the applicant, and you can say yes to all of the... Page number eight, I have five and six, I have five, just to make sure I have the applicant, and you can say yes to all of the requirements.
On the application? Page number six. You have, you have copied that, Mr. Fuller?
Yeah, it's just the, your application, right?
Right.
Yes, correct.
Let me, uh, I know I have it in the folder here, but just give me a moment.
I can.
Can you give him a copy?
Yeah, I do, I have extra copies.
Do you have an extra copy? All right. I, I'm sure it's in the folder, but I'll read it, I'll give it back to you, okay.
Okay, can you restate that question? Manny?
Page eight, I have five and six.
Five and six. Page six? Oh, page eight, I'm sorry.
Five, to make sure that we can answer your questions, those requirements. And item six, to determine whether a bond or a catch the possible major requirement will be approved.
And Manny, you're talking about the landscaping improvements?
Landscaping, being stormwater, you know, whatever needs to be done, if you feel comfortable that the applicant will comply, or do we need to have to do a bond?
Bill, is that something that is the norm? Is that the norm, is that? Nothing done yet. I see what you're saying there, but, page eight, I don't have.
Page eight. No, this is the, uh, assessment, environmental assessment, that's not the application.
No, it's not the, I don't have the application. I don't have a copy, yeah, help.
I mean, I can read it if you want.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, yeah, pa- page eight, uh, number five is specifications to be considered, okay? And this is for the board. And it, you know, it says, "In considering and acting upon any site plan, the planning board shall consider the site layout and overall appearance of all buildings and the proposed development, so that they will have a harmonious relationship with the existing or permitted development of contiguous, contiguous land or, and/or adjacent neighborhoods." And so that, you're, I guess you're supposed to check that. Number, the next thing it says, "So they, so that they will have no material adverse effect upon the desirability of such neighborhoods." And this is as you're reviewing our project, I mean, this is, this is for your determination. And then, I, I think to, to Manny's point, it says, "The following objectives in particular shall be accomplished." And so, it says whether yes or no to these. "That all proposed traffic access and ways are adequate but not excessive in number." You know, I think that's reasonable to say yes. "That it's adequate in width, grade, alignment, and visibility." You know, again, I, I, I think that's a reasonable yes. Due, due to the nature of what we're proposing, uh, we're not substantially changing or altering the site other than adding the parking surface, which, again, it's a whole purpose is to, to alleviate some of the issues that are even outlined here. "The next one is not located too near street corners or other places of public assembly." Again, this development is, is very central to the existing campus. Um, and then finally, it says, "And, and any other similar safety considerations." So, I, I, I mean, I, again, it's the board's consideration, but I, I think his point is, we should be able to answer yes to all that.
Right.
Yeah. Under B, it says the, that adequate off-street parking and loading spaces and unloading berths are provided to prevent parking on public streets of vehicles of any person connected with or visiting the use, and that the interior circulation system is adequate to provide safe accessibility to all off-street parking lots. And I think that's, that's an obvious yes in this case. Uh, under C, it says that there is adequate space between structures on the lot and of setbacks from private driveways, and if any, so as to assure ample light and air in the interest of public health, safety, and general welfare. And, you know, I, I, again, I, I can't speak for the board, but I think that's a yes. Uh, and then finally, under D, it says that all playground, parking, and service areas are reasonably screened at all seasons of the year from the view of adjacent residential lots and streets, and that the general landscaping of the site is in character with the generally prevailing in the neighborhood, and that the planning board should also consider public safety and determine the application of this standard.
Okay. Then the last one is the required bond or.
Is it, is bond, you know?
You have no way? Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, and I think if, I, I, I think you may have said. Well, if it's gonna be open, I think what we can do is we can, we'll just take a look, we'll get together. I can make a recommendation to the board as to if, or not, and if so, how much.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I mean, obviously, and Jason can speak to this. Normally, a landscaping bond, if you felt it was necessary, is sometimes appropriate. Or stormwater infrastructure, I, I think those are the two items. I mean, obviously, the cost of the building and construction, I mean, that's entirely, you know, on, it's, you know, it's a private property, and it's, it's on their development, but I think it's, it's things that the board feels would have a, a, like a municipal impact, you know, which is usually things like landscaping or stormwater.
We'll, we'll make a decision next session on that, as far as that particular question, so we could have an answer for the building department. Uh, and Jason will include your thoughts on it.
It may be useful, John, just to prepare an estimate, things like stormwater.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Any, anything else, any questions from the board?
No.
Mr. McKay, could you go over the, the direction we should go as far as open or close? You just mentioned about open.
You said it first, you said. I think you, well, we have, it, I think there's been a general discussion about to, to hold the public hearing open one more time. Mr. Fuller's gonna comply with some of Jason's technical comments, provide the site assessment that we discussed, and some of the bonding estimates. I think that was essentially what we discussed.
Okay.
Might be a good idea to, since two members are absent this evening, to give them a, a chance to ask any questions, or.
Be good.
Or make any comments.
So we, we need to take a motion to keep it open?
Yeah, you would just make a, a motion to continue the, ask the applicant to provide the information we discussed, and make a motion to continue the public hearing to the July date, presumably, yeah.
You know what we need?
I understand, yeah.
And then what I'm gonna ask the, the board members, if I have a mention to keep the board, of the public hearing open until we have a feedback from, uh, the applicant.
And that we would discuss that at the.
We discuss this particular question.
Pass a motion.
Okay.
Pass a motion.
So I would say.
Motion, uh, may I make that motion? Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. All right. Anything else, any questions?
Nope, we'll see you in a month, all right?
Yep, we'll see you in a month, thank you very much, well done.
Yeah.
Okay, do we have any representatives here from, uh, McGregor Wood?
When they called me today, they said we're not be able to attend the meeting by source, so they may not need us.
Okay, could we could still, we give them a minute to, to leave, we could still, as a board, talk about it, and then, uh, establish ourselves. Okay, got it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, really, all we have to do is discuss this resolution here for lead agency. We gotta make sure we do. Those we could say yes to, I didn't see anything wrong with those. Good, then, done that quiz.
When I see, look at this. It seems fine.
Did you, you have a chance to read it?
I did, yeah, so that's the one that was passed to all the, the agencies, but no one objected to us, right? So, it's gonna be us.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
So, nobody objected, so we got it. And this is makes it official.
Lucky us.
Okay, the next topic tonight will be the McGregor Woods, uh, subdivision. I'm gonna have Mr. McKay talk a little bit about, uh, the recommended resolution on that, since we didn't hear any objections, um, from any of our county or town agencies. Yep. If you could, when you discuss it, if you could talk a little bit about the process, secret process, and then why we're able to do this.
Okay.
So, the McGregor project is a seventeen-lot, uh, proposed subdivision with the site plan approval. They've been here a few times, they've, they have provided a, a, a plan, not engineered drawings, but they've provided a plan. Based upon what they provided pursuant to seeker, this board, um, preliminarily determined that the action was subject to seeker, and that it would be an unlisted action. It circulated to be the lead agency to conduct seeker review, uh, coordinated seeker review of the action. On April thirtieth, those mailings were made. They included, uh, the E A F and the application, and they were sent to all involved and interested agencies that were identified by the village. We're required to wait thirty days, thirty days has passed a long time ago. We're almost about two, more than two weeks past the thirty days. We did get a lot of responses, uh, no one contested, or generally, everyone consented to the planning board being the lead agency. We received no objections. So, based upon that, the next step for this board to take is to actually establish itself as the lead agency for coordinated review under seeker. And the resolution that I just gave you says almost, almost exactly that. It just, it out, my first paragraph outlines the proposed application. Second paragraph talks about the process under seeker, should, then that on April thirtieth, the, uh, mailings were made. More than thirty days have passed, there's been no objections. Therefore, pursuant to, uh, seeker, this board has determined, uh, that it will be the lead agency to conduct coordinated review.
Okay. And before I sign it, and we just need to change, Ms. Doyle is not here tonight.
Sure, yeah, well, this is right.
Otherwise, that's just admin.
Yeah, that's why we have the draft waterhead mark on it.
Okay, any questions by the board? Do I hear a motion to approve the resolution to establish us as?
Pass a motion.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, thanks a lot, Mr. McKay, appreciate it. Any other business on McGregor Woods? I don't, if, since they're not here, I, well, they, they'll get the word from Mr. Carmona that it's been approved?
Yes.
And now, can you talk a little bit about the variances, et cetera, and the status with Z B A?
Right, so basically, the, uh, they have made an application to the zoning board of appeals. They appeared one time. They presented the, uh, I think they were essentially lot size variances, if I remember correctly. So, uh, they presented their proposal to the Z B A. Because lead agency status was pending, the Z B A took no action, uh, listened. It didn't even, it didn't even schedule a future public hearing. So, essentially, they went, they made their pitch to the Z B A. My understanding from Jonathan DeJoy, uh, associate at my firm, was that the board didn't seem to have any significant opposition to it, although they, they didn't really take a straw poll, they, but there was no, uh, opposition, so to speak, from the Z B A. I think candidly, that's probably what the applicant was hoping for. So the Z B A matter is simply on hold until the applicant asks to go back onto some future Z B A agenda, or to be scheduled for a public hearing. Uh, and in the interim, I expect that, uh, they'll be working on engineered plans to provide for Jason's office and for Manny's review to get to a further meeting before this board.
Is there no change in the seventeen number?
Not right now, right, there hasn't been any.
No, that's what they're asking the variance for, so if they were granted the variance, they would have, uh, permission to have lots that are de minimis inside.
Excuse me, I'm not sure I heard you, did you say if it's approved?
If it's approved.
They have to get the variances, 'cause that could impact their.
I didn't hear the word if. It's often a word that.
Yes, understood.
It's important, swept under the carpet.
Yes.
Gary, any questions?
So, are they gonna hear back from the zoning board prior to them coming back to us?
No, the, the, right, no. Because this agency has to, because you're now the seeker lead agency, this board would have to issue a negative declaration under seeker before the Z B A could take any action to approve or deny the variance request. But they haven't had a public hearing either, a public hearing is not even scheduled yet. So, again, presumably, they'll be back here. There'll be some more proceedings before this board, when they feel they're close enough to what the actual project is going to be, without any changes or any suggestions that this board may provide them, uh, then they'll go back to the Z B A at that point.
Question on procedure, so, you know, as they flesh out the details, and flesh out the details, and they get, um, more information to us, and we determine whether they're getting close to a public hearing. Does the Z B A have their public hearing before our public hearing, or is our public hearing, uh, before theirs? Does it matter? Just processed, you know, as I'm.
Yeah, I, I guess it could happen either way, but the, but the point is, the, the Z B A cannot take any final action on the variances until after this board has issued a negative declaration. So this board would have to conduct its public hearing, issue a negative declaration.
And then they could go.
Perhaps not issue a deter, oh, you can't issue a determination. So the board, this board are here, here at first, would have to issue a determination before the Z B A could take.
Before the Z B A, okay, that's, that's what I was looking for, okay. That's the, that's the, the way ahead. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? Any other comments? Of anyone? Mr. Carmona, any? Jason? Lena?
Is there, is there any element of a proposal to create, uh, a rather large, uh, project, uh, in, in the area that could include the N E M A school property? Are we, you know, talking about hotel and, uh, and?
That's in the town, right?
Yes.
The town.
That would be, that would be a town project.
That, but.
That would be in the town.
Yes, of course, but, but they're our neighbors, I mean, or, do we get nothing to say about our proximity to this large, a, a project? Condo-style apartments, uh?
There, we would, presumably, we would be the ones supplying water and sewer service. I would expect that we would get notified.
They would notify us like we just notified them.
I would imagine, I don't think that we would.
As a community, we would probably have something to say, but not as a board, right?
Oh, yes, right, as a community.
It would be input to the town board.
Right.
And I'm sure the town board will have a public hearing for it, on something like that.
Well, if they, if, uh, someone on the town board decided. Well, if they, if someone on the town board decided that the planning board, for instance, might have something of importance to say about that project, I would, I would hope that they. If, if that happened, notice that you could hear, if that happened, I, I hope we would.
Well, their sessions are open, so you, someone can go and talk to their town, their planning board. Okay, any, any other questions? Okay, good question. Any other business? Anybody have any other business? If not, I wanna thank the board members. I wanna thank the, our consultants and the code enforcement office. Thank you very much. And the next planning board meeting is in July fifteenth at seven o'clock. And if there's no further action, do I hear a motion to close?
I, so move.
I'll second.
All in favor? Okay, thank you very much. Good meeting tonight, thank you. Good, thank you. And thanks for that thought about, I'm glad I just mentioned something that I would know.
Yeah.
All right. Given the numbers, though, there was no. You'd have to call the union office.